Seven o'clock like to open the Charlton playing board meeting for March second twenty twenty two. First up, we have a discussion with East and LLC for proposed zoning change from village district to community business on L Stevens Road. And we all have a nice cool cool map in front of us.
Yeah, I did a little of the area in question, so. For one discuss about possible zoning change on L Stevens Road.
So right now that parcel is zoned partially CB and partially agriculture.
That's where the orange and the white is correct to reference on our map.
And possibly see the intersection, it's right at the intersection of L Stevens Road and 20. So it's.
And our 40s across the street.
Yeah, yeah, it's right there.
Yep.
So that the A zone is kind of messed up a little bit because the the village goes all the way up through 20 from North Main Street as part of the Miller property.
Yep.
And when that goes, when that got changed from A to Village, the remaining portion of my property now remained A and it does, it doesn't conform. So I'd actually like to change it to Village. I have a different. Or the shows a little bit different. So this is route 20. And L Stevens Road, you see the house that's existing, the CB line goes right through it. And this portion right here is A and it doesn't conform to the A zone. Because of when they did CB, they didn't, they went back like 400 feet from 20, they didn't go full property lines.
Right. We're finding that out.
Yeah, it's same problem as on the eastern side of.
Yeah.
I mean, I have a few more things I could point out.
Yeah, just to. With that, so what you're looking to do is change the aid of Village?
The portion of aid of Village, yes, because if possible, I'd like to be able to get, there's enough frontage there to get two lots out of it, two A and R lots, if it gets changed to Village and just do a couple of like starter homes. And then keep the frontage on route 20 some commercial and see what we can get to go in there.
I mean, I know we're working on our map changes in the fall, but this is actually one of the types of changes that we want to do, so. We didn't get it on the spring, you know, annual meeting. It just, you know, is ahead of the game, but this is one of the classic examples of some of the zoning problems we have.
So the large, and the large parcel next to it is already Village, so it's not only can be put Village out there on an island.
Correct.
There's already Village is on next to it.
Yeah, that whole side of the road.
So, so I guess my question is if you're in favor of this, do I need to have my engineer draw anything up to do that type of zone change?
No, what we do in the case like this for town meeting, all we do is like a before and after.
Okay.
So if all the ag parts is going to turn to Village, we have this before.
Yeah.
And then we have it, you know, the actor with Saul Blue of the purple for Village.
But some of those ag parts are individual homes as well, there's one, two, three, four, five, there's five houses.
He's referenced the map lot block, ain't she Randy?
Yeah, I represent all the properties that are where the zone change being affected.
Do you own that whole property? Which the, that, that whole agricultural property? No, if you look at the map, you'll see there's on, on the front, that's what I was saying, there's five other homes there that state in the A zone. Yeah. They don't really conform either, but they're preexisting, they've been there since before zoning. So if you build a house there, you're gonna have. I am. There's another one, so you got a section here. It's a double edged sword. When you get to your zoning discussion.
Yeah, there you go.
We'll talk, be a couple of talking points up there. But yeah, it's. You know, 75 year frontage. There's water available, so. Again, they're just going to be on the small side starter homes. Really that concern is the setback. You know, I think there's a need for a village district.
Are you looking to have the whole?
Does that make sense? Yeah, you don't want to get involved with that. Yeah, that shouldn't be there pretty much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you looking to have all the properties that are in the agriculture zone or just the properties that are?
Just the ones that you are controlling.
The property you have control of.
Um.
So you just have to mark out which are properties.
Which map block and block? Okay.
So we have to reference it for, you know, the article.
That's gonna land lock those four houses as A, or do you? I don't, my brother owns one of those, I don't know if he'd be interested in having it rezoned to Village. I don't know, I haven't talked to the other property owners. I mean, it would be cleaner if to just redo that whole section and get it out of A because they don't they're like, they're 100 feet of road frontage there, so they definitely don't conform.
They, they're actually better off if it was changed for them, you know.
But I don't want to speak for them, I don't know, if you want me to knock on doors and ask them if they're interested. I'm not sure they even care. Should you, should we approach it with that question or?
Well, it'd be nice is to do it all, make it cleaner, but if they don't want to then, you know, but if we at least ask the question and then if they say no, then it is what it is.
It's not really gonna affect them in any way.
Well, sure, it would allow them to, it would open up any use under Village.
Yeah, it'd actually positively affect them because right now they have to conform to setbacks in the A zone on a.
Okay.
What's considered a time.
It's not gonna hurt the rest of the neighborhood.
You know, it's almost impossible to add on, put up a shed or anything, you know, because they still have the land for it.
Yeah. Will allow them to do mixed use, do run, easier to run a home office out of it or do a mixed use there.
Yeah, it provides more opportunities if they.
I don't see a problem with that, if you want to go and approach those other property owners, if they're interested in switching, by all means.
Okay.
In the essence of time, because.
Yeah.
Time is closing. This is town meeting. I always shoot to have you on the April 6th planning board agenda for the public hearing for that.
Okay.
It's gonna be, you know, a two minute meeting, but it's still, we have to do the public hearing part of it to get it to the selectmen so that we can have it. I've already done it as a placeholder on the one.
Okay.
This, this property and another one, so they're already held as placeholders, so. But I will show them for the public hearing for April 6th, that means as soon as I can get.
Are they required to be notified? If others.
Yeah, public hearing, yes.
Excellent, thank you. That would have to, now the public hearing would have to be by one, by next week, by, by the next week.
April, first of May.
We can do, you can actually do very close to town meeting, but I'm shooting to April 6th, which is more discussing later, but.
Great. All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing for Edward Services LLC site plan application fuel station convenience store 16 Savage Road. And the afternoon as requested, it continues to April 6th.
And I'm not sure if you can be heard on April 6th because the DVA is cutting it closure, put it that way, as far as. CVA is gonna hear and make a decision. Feeling the zone officer's decision on whether that can be.
All right, we have a motion to continue the public hearing for Edward Services LLC till April 6th.
So.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Bill?
Bill Fontaine, I.
I, Janice. All right, next up, we have a zoning bylaw diagnostic review with CMR PC planner, Gabe, Trevor, Gabe, how you doing?
Hi, I'm doing well, how is everyone?
Didn't keep you waiting tonight.
I know, thank you. Um, yeah, so Randy, were you able to print out what I sent you?
Distributed to all the board members, so everybody had.
Okay, great, so. Um. And Bill, do you have a copy handy?
I do, I'm opening it up right now, Gabe.
Okay, great. Um, I just don't, I'll screen share in a sec for something related, but for the main part. Um, so if I recall from the last meeting, I think the two main things you guys wanted me to do a little bit more on was to pull a definition for ATM. And then, you know, sort of pull an animal kennel definition. Uh, so if, so first, let's look at the definitions and then in the use table, it's left blank right now, so we're gonna, we should discuss like how to, how to put them in the use table. Um, so for the ATM, it's pretty straightforward. In the use table, it's clarified that, like, like you guys were discussing, that I said separate from an existing commercial structure, which I think was in the spirit of what you guys were concerned about is sort of a new standalone ATM versus one. You know, if a, if a grocery store wants to put an ATM out front or inside, that shouldn't be a thing, but you know, if, if a property owner has like a parking lot and wants to put like a kiosk in it, that's like its own, that's a new use. But in the definition.
Yeah.
In the definitions, I just say a physical machine used to perform banking functions, including or not limited to cash or check deposits, cash withdrawals, automatic audit, account balance inquiry, account transfer transactions, or customer service inquiries. This machine acts as an automated version of a human bank teller and. So, I mean, I think that's pretty straightforward. And then, like I said, I think, I think the, it was more important to get it in the, in the use table that we're talking about, like a separate use, a new use. It's helpful to have the definition, but you know, I think this could go into any sort of commercial building like we discussed. And then, um. Where'd I put, oh, here's, and then animal kennel is the other one I pulled. I forgot it came before ATM. Um, so I have a lot with structures or pens in which three or more dogs, cats, or other household pets are boarded, bred, or sold. Um, and so that would basically mean, you know, that could, that could be, you know, referring to either a commercial use or a personal use, if someone is building a structure for multiple animals. You know, specifically dog, cats, household pets. Um, and then, as you'll see in the use table, I have two separate lines for outdoor and indoor animal kennel. Because like we discussed, there could easily be one that's like indoors at a, at a vet clinic. You don't want to, you know, and if it's indoors, the noise is the main problem, that, that probably wouldn't really be a problem. It's not that different from having household pets inside. But then outdoors would be like the special use case, so, um. Moving to the use table, these are both in section five, which should be on page two of the use table, so there are T and W in, in section five. And so, as you can see, they're, they should be highlighted in yellow. I, I changed it to just automatic teller machines so that just to, you know, make it as sort of clinical as possible. And then I said separate from preexisting commercial structure, which again, I feel like is in spirit with what we, what your concern was. Um, and then those, those are, you know, the use, the, the uses are just based on the, you know, what the current zoning is, so. Um, you have not allowed in a R40 and RSE and then permitted. You know, elsewhere. And then, um, moving on to animal kennel. So yeah, that's like the main thing is for animal kennel, I mean, we're gonna have to decide where we want to allow it for indoor and outdoor.
You used to, in definitions of them, where they added on certain size property. Wait, I, I mean, you would want this on a quarter rate to walk, but you know.
Right.
Whatever you, being number you pick.
Yeah. I think that would be, I mean, that would, that would definitely be in line, I guess it's up to the planning board to decide what size parcel you want to prevent them on. And we could always, you know, I could always put in the definition, if you guys want to, you know, add a sort of front, a special frontage for a kennel, so that it's, you know, 20 feet back from the property line or something like that. Yeah. For like an out, for an outdoor kennel.
Yeah, it's only outdoor, I mean, indoor is a non-issue really, it's just outdoor, you know.
Yeah.
Living thousand acres, but it puts it in the wrong spot.
Yeah. It's next to his neighbor's house, so maybe the appropriate thing is this X number of feet from the property line.
Yeah, I agree.
But what's the appropriate, is it any less than a million, it's at 30 feet, then it is at 20 feet or? Would you go bigger than that?
Well, I guess.
I mean, I'm seeing, just on a, just on a quick Google, I'm seeing like 50 feet. 500 feet in a residential area. So it's, I think it's, it's kind of up to the board. What, you know, because at a certain point, if you're restricting it, you know, 500 feet, you're basically limiting it to really big. To really big lots.
And that might be appropriate for, for residential area. Um, is that something you'd want to put in an R40 or, or, you know, RSE? RSE maybe, but R40, yeah.
RSE, isn't the minimum Swifers an RSE, is it 30,000?
Yeah, if you're on tour, I mean.
Yeah.
No, it's 40,000.
That wouldn't meet a 500 setback, that's for sure.
Or maybe just special.
50 or 30.
With a board to use in this direction.
That might be a way to handle it, you know.
Yeah, use it as a case by case basis, because each part, property can, has its own, own unique features, I guess.
Houses and all that good stuff.
So you think make it a special permit?
Door?
For outdoor.
So I, I kind of jotted down special permit for, for AR40, RSE and, and B.
Okay.
No in Village, I mean, that, those are. And then, uh. Site plan for CB and IG, does that make sense? Or just, yes?
Does, uh.
For BEP and IG?
CB.
Of CB and IG.
Uh, CB IG, would, would we want to allow that in BEP? I mean, it's.
I don't know about BEP and C.
Yeah, I was thinking the, just a site plan review for CB and IG and special permit for the free residential zones and, and neighborhood business.
Now, as a kennel operator, you need a state license.
I mean, I think this would allow us to sort of, if, if, if there was someone who had like, you know, six dogs and wanted to keep them outside, you know. It's really more about the structure and the noise issue. Um, I'm sure there are license, kind of licensing things, I know it's been an issue in Worcester where if you have, you basically have to have it as a business, if you own it, like if, 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 if I had a house in Worcester and I had five dogs, it's some number, if you're over that number of dogs, it basically has to be a, like, commercial kennel, which I don't think really makes sense in Charlton for like, especially for like the agricultural district.
Yeah, I don't have the intent, I'm sure there's people that have a few dogs, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the minimum is four.
And in the current definition, it's a minimum for three dogs, so if you wanted to have like a doghouse for one or two dogs, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be subject to, to the planning board.
But the only thing that's required is the animal officer has to inspect it on a yearly basis.
If she, if she, if she's aware of it.
Well, yeah. Right. Hopefully the neighbor would let somebody know.
So you need a state license, I guess, for oversight as far as. Chose of 40.
Right, I'm not sure, yeah, if you are really running a kennel, I'm not sure if there's a state requirement or license.
All right. So, I'm just, you know, anything that would be out there now would be preexisting, non-conforming.
Correct.
And be like, yeah, something in them.
So I.
Next to ring around for indoor.
Outdoor, special permits, is indoor more, more appropriate with a site plan?
But I mean, they still gotta take the dogs outside, right? If you have an indoor, they can't.
Let them out to run or whatever.
Yeah.
But at least they're not out there all night or all day long, or they could be. Do you want to do the?
Because I mean, I think that, uh. Could be a special permit again, I guess, I don't know, depending on how many dogs they plan on having and. I, I only look at. In autumn, we own a, a commercial piece of property, you know, building, a, a proposed tenant wants to go in there, but they need to do a, a doggy daycare, but they need to get a special permit from the planning board.
Well.
That just triggers in my head and then I think of it.
Right, well, we got our foot in town.
Correct, that was a special, was that a special permit or was that just sort of a site plan? Because I only chose a bylaw for.
Probably not, yeah.
Right, a site plan as a regular business.
Correct, in CB, yeah.
Yeah, but they're rated on 20, so it's not bad with R3.
No.
So is this, so indoor, is that something you even want to permit in an R40? I mean, does that make sense to put that in an R40? Or ours, you know.
Be a home.
That's it.
All in their home business, I guess, if you're doing it in R40.
It, it would, but if you're doing it out, inside kennel. So if you allow an inside kennel, if you allow any kennel in any residential district, yeah, how do you make sure that there's not room for parking to run the business?
Each case by case basis, because there's different sized posses in R40.
So you want to keep indoor basically the same, the same regulations? Sorry, Russ, can you repeat that?
Yeah, just keep it the same, sorry, Gabe, keep it the same.
Do you, yeah, do you want to keep it as two lines, so in the future, if you want to change it?
Yeah.
No, please.
Okay, and then how do you want it treated in BEP?
That's just gonna be a no, right, for BEP.
Yeah, I don't think that's, you want a lot of business park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Waiting for this, so. Um, and, and the other no was for Village, do we say?
Yeah.
Yep. So I have it for SP and AR40 and RSE and NB, a no in Village, P in CB and IG, and a no in BEP, and that's for both outdoor and indoor kennels.
So what, your definition of a kennel?
Or, uh, yeah. Yeah, a lot with structures or pens in which three or more dogs, cats, or other household pets are boarded, bred, and, or sold.
So that wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily cover a dog training facility or something like that? That, even.
Yeah, not, not really, I mean, but I feel like in my experience, a lot of those places are usually also veterinary clinics and/or kennels, I mean, my parents, like, you know, they go to, they have a dog training place, they, that's where they leave their dogs. Um, and they have like everything there, so. I mean, typically, like, and my, you know, I've, I've seen other kennels where usually they have these other services that would also be regulated by like, you know, veterinary clinic or just general commercial uses.
You have bylaws on veterinary. Where they can go and everything.
Yeah, we do have some larger lot, no, does Village go all the way up, rain for rent, is that Village or is that?
Well, actually, somebody is, uh. We're gonna hear on 23rd where somebody wants to rezone it from Village to CB, specifically put a vet clinic.
Towards, uh.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to push anybody that's in that area now out with these laws, because I think there's some properties there that could handle that different things, so. And I know there's a training facility next to Rain for Rent.
Yeah, the vet clinic would be the next lot.
Okay.
All right. Um, so I think that's the main thing for tonight. I guess I can start work on warrant language for, for the, uh, for the meeting. Um, the only other thing I wanted to show you guys, so you were, you were interested in having like, I'm gonna screen share. I, I mocked it up for a couple of the sections of the bylaws, but you're interested in having sort of a guide version, like a guided version of the bylaws that, or the, of the, of the use table that shows, you know, what the, what for the existing uses, uh, what the revisions have been, so I'll just show you how I have that mocked up right now.
Can you add that to this, because it makes it, it would make it a lot more user friendly for, you know, the people that. That, because you and I have to go back page and look like what, you know.
Yeah.
And again, so.
What was it? Okay.
So do you guys see this? So I, I just have it for like the first couple of sections.
Yeah. Yeah, that's for informational at the time meeting to, to get that through, yeah.
So like here, I have a, you know, just like the prior symbol and then an arrow to the new one. Um, so I was, I mean, I'm gonna put that together for the whole, for the whole use table. You know, for the board's use and also for the public, um, so if that looks good, I can continue with that.
And do you think you can have the, that ready by March 23rd?
Oh, yeah. For sure.
Sure, if you need the arrows or is it too busy, could you just do a strikeout?
Yeah, yeah, that, that would probably look better.
For the, the hours, it's, it's, it might make it a little bit too busy, but a strikeout would, would make it clear too.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, just make sure it's in the.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a perfect way to do it.
Cool.
Yeah, looks good, Gabe.
Thank you.
The, the warrant in color, so it would all be anyways.
Yes, so.
So something, yeah, the strikeout would make it.
Strikeouts.
It would be useful at the thing where, where on the warrant, it won't be, it'll be all black and white.
Yeah, so the strikeout would do with the, the two different colors with.
Um, would you want new uses, since it won't be in, since it'll be in black and white, do you want me to like italicize the new uses we're introducing?
Uh, yeah, yeah, or bold.
Yeah, or, yeah, bold, bold would probably look, make more sense.
Yeah, that way it'd be, it'll pop.
Yeah.
Even maybe put the word new, just right in the front of it, maybe, Gabe.
Yeah.
Just wondering how this is gonna look when it goes through a, a copy machine. Yeah, just.
For sure, yeah, for sure.
It may blur something out. Perfect, thanks, Gabe.
Yeah, no problem, uh, your next meeting is the 16?
No, it's the 23rd.
Okay.
The, what I'm trying to do is, uh, you know, the board has discussed it, and I, we're trying to have a public hearing possibly on April 6th.
Okay.
Paper, I gotta have this in my hand by the 23rd, you know, who wants notes in the paper.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, that can, I can do that.
Mr. Chair, go right ahead. Did, did you guys consider adding battery storage to CB?
I.
As a special permit? We discussed it, but I'm not sure that we made the change.
There might be something, I think that might have been when Ron was working on it.
Yeah. It's battery store.
Yeah, there's nothing about battery in there right now.
Uh, energy storage system or something to that effect. It's probably with battery.
Yeah.
Yeah, commercial energy storage and residential energy storage, it's W and X of section six. Currently, commercial is not permitted anywhere except for IG and BEP. And then residential energy storage is allowed by right everywhere except IG and P.
I guess I'd like to renew my request to add CB as a special permit.
Well, well, on the last page, it says emergency backup facility with less than or equal to 30 megawatts of power output. It's, uh. Allowed in all, all districts.
Those are accessories, I think, John, right?
So I thought, we were talking like if somebody built a building and they wanted to put a power plant, you know, emergency battery.
Okay, got you, yes.
Be associated.
All right, yep.
So as it stands outside, you build the build, it wouldn't be a standalone, but if you built it like.
That'd be for that one building's use. I'm talking with everything that's going on with solar and the grid and what they're trying to do for upgrades. They're trying to do standalone battery storage. And I know you've a lot of zones. I think it can fit in the C B zone on certain parcels with a special permit. And right now, straight now. Asking you, they consider making that a special permit in the C B's.
Yeah, I mean, with a special permit, we can wrap some rules around it, some requirements. Get a lot of fit.
Same specific.
Yeah.
And you're not talking about twenty acres of battery storage. You can fit, it's a small storage container on on a half an acre.
It, I mean, it mainly affects properties that front on twenty. And maybe set back into property, you don't have to look at them, they're offered or whatever you come up with. Some type of screening.
There's quite a bit of C B along Route one sixty nine that is very tough to develop because of the proximity to Katy Brook. Where something like this could work and bring in, I I think these are gonna bring in good revenue for the community, much like solar does.
It's it's only gonna be on the main roads. It will be on, you know, C, that's primarily where C B is, so.
Yeah.
It's done a special permit, you know. Property specific, so properties that will work and properties that won't, so.
So are we talking about adding a new use or are we talking about modifying one of these three? Like either the emergency power backup or the commercial or residential energy storage?
We added the C B district, we added as a special permit.
Section six, number W.
Okay.
And that would fuel cell be covered under commercial storage or that's commercial generating? If if, I mean, that's the next. Kind of where things are going.
You know, it's it's like the solar fields where they put the big batteries. It's basically, you know, they put a one together.
Okay, well, I'll change that to, I'll change that to S P. That makes sense. If the board wants to keep going with that.
Yeah, I don't have any. Uh, with not. Special permit to C B, that's.
John and Jean, you guys found that? You know, special permit?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Village District.
Yep.
Much like the. Yeah.
Go for a variance for that twenty five foot setback. Was there any further discussion about making that twenty five foot setback? Way if the lot is over a certain size. So if you have an acre and a half, sixty thousand square foot lot. You don't have to just cram the building within twenty five feet of the main road and have an acre of land.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we talked about a while back when the the mushroom prime wanted to go with. And it was a, uh, but the way that it'd be was, you know, the building twenty five feet from the road, which seemed odd.
Is that to get? One of his first design was the intent to have that.
Personally, I think it's, you're forcing something that it's never gonna be anyways. I mean, it was a good pipe dream, but.
I I would think it's, I think the dream would be just looking at this, this whole lot of land here that runs behind here. Village District, if somebody was to buy that and put a a road in and have, just. Still fronts and like a little village district. So I think that the the idea was like. If it ever came to Cheltenham, that's what we wanted to look like. We just don't wanna have a free for all, we wanna. Have a kind of a trendy downtown look, not trendy, right?
Yeah.
With buildings close to each other and such.
I I think when Village was sold, it was sold at the existing lots would be more usable to the owners. Where they could repurpose and redevelop them into that, and that would get us the village field on, village field on our existing roads.
Original.
So North Main Street, Main Street, and Sonic Home Road, that's where Alan focused the village to kinda, this is our village district. What if you're gonna redevelop, let's redevelop and make it work there. And I think that, again, a twenty five foot set, maximum setback. Must have come from another community that used it to to make it work. And and some of those houses fit that. The smaller lots, but now. Now they could reuse those as mixed use or as commercial where before they couldn't because it was our forty. As far as the Miller property and someone developing that because it's village, it's, you know, the the larger parcels like that that are village or or. Kind of a little confusing, just like the Masonic Home property that that the town bought, that's thirty acres in this village. And what you can do there is is kind of, if you if you put your own road in, then it's great. You can stay within twenty five feet of it. But if you don't wanna subdivide it and do all that and use the property, you're stuck being within twenty, unless you go for a variance, which the town was able to get. But like on on North Main Street, we we bought a piece of property and we separated, subdivided it from the house, so there's sixty thousand square feet. And it has frontage on North Main Street and um H Putnam Road that P and P came in for a site plan. I don't know if that was ever finalized. There was never submitted, no. But part of their problem is they have sixty thousand square feet with quite a bit of land. But when they proposed doing their buildings, they have to be within twenty five feet of the road and they have, you know, an acre of land in between the two buildings, which.
That's what happened. The building's out on the edges, but the middle property was thinking cuz the building intended to be out on the edges, so.
But I I don't know if there's like a magic number of forty thousand square feet where if you hit that number, that that twenty five foot setback goes away. And and it makes the parcel more user friendly.
But then it kind of takes it away from that village field. That's what people want.
I think, so I'm getting back to why we're doing this, is that. This will be done, and then we can go on to tackle what the master plan is. And and take it to the next, it's like, maybe when we do the master plan, we'll say, to your point, that's totally ridiculous to have it that way.
Okay.
And manipulate it to, at least we have a firm set of rules to go by. And usage table to go by, and that would. Have us have a discussion on, you know, going another step further and seeing what these these properties that village district should look like. So it's not like we're not that, I don't think, my attempt is like, we're not trying to keep the things, the village district or. Or these areas, we are, you know, we're we're cutting him off, ripping them out, but it it leads to another discussion about how.
I just wanted to share this one zoning.
No.
Trying to get as much done.
This is the big move to define stuff and then the the master plan.
Everybody come in the master plan and say, hey, you know, it's like.
This is just.
We, why is that like that?
Understood.
You know.
What is gonna, so the zone, the zoning bylaw will continue to evolve.
Yes.
Historically, it's been, this is the zoning and this is set. And and it's hard to to, again, have it change or evolve every five years and we just.
To your point, it's not some of the the original master plan or what they they define or Alan defined. It's no longer relevant. The terms are no longer. We had to update the terms of this, and we need to, okay, this is where we are now, so let's. With the knowledge moving forward with the new development in town, let's let's redo our plan and to your point, okay, let's do this. And and we've had a lot of people come and try to, you know, it's like, we're getting a zoning, we're we're doing, you know, everybody petitions to eat. So we're we're taking that into account, like trying to eat enough the route twenty corridor or the community business. But in the same token, leave it like, leave it at a point where it's like, okay, now we've got our rules, we've got our regulations. The definitions, let's talk about the master plan and then go at it and move forward, so. Understood, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Um, and I will, uh, you know, get that stuff ready for the twenty third. I'll see you then.
I can come back to the master plan discussion.
I mean, probably. All right, have a good night.
All right, next up, we're having, within minutes or not?
Uh, no. Never gonna touch it again. I just wanna make sure that everybody's okay with it as far as. Because. Times are wasting that to have a public hearing for the uh. We're doing the, at this point, it's the definitions in the use table.
You wanna post, um. Once we get the documents, wanna post them on the website?
Yeah, that's why I was trying to get them, cuz I have to get them by the twenty third in order to meet.
Yeah, I mean, if people wanna see them, they can put on the website.
As soon as they have them, I'll vote them, so everybody can read them. And maybe Andrew or somebody that's on the town Facebook page and put it out there.
Anything else?
Free COVID test for everyone.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly why I do it.
Everybody gets two. We give them to all employees and all um board and commission members.
Thanks for picking those up, James. No, y'all got it?
Except my wife that works.
Two free COVID tests, but you'll stop by to pick it up. Everybody's okay with the posting, be noticed for the public hearing. I've already, you know, it's already a placeholder on the warrant as well as uh. Pete's property and the one of the only they wanna, you wanna.
So we got a public hearing for those beginning April seventy seven.
Yeah, well, actually, the first one's gonna be the twenty third. Peters and the bylaw on the six of April.
Good to have a bet in town.
Yes.
We have two.
On a building.
Yeah, yeah, she's on North Main Street.
Oh, yeah, she's full.
All right, if no one has anything else, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Bill Fontaine, aye.
See, aye, all right, thank you very much.
See ya.